One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our first order of business will be ordinance thirty dash twenty-five.
Ordinance dash, ordinance thirty dash, hold up.
No, I'm not saying anything, sorry.
Ordinance thirty dash twenty-five and ordinance for appropriations and tax rates proposed 2026 Muncie Civil Budget.
Is there a motion? Okay, just open it up for discussion. Anyone here to speak on ordinance thirty dash twenty-five? Any council members?
We're not allowed.
Okay, moving on to the...
Oh, yeah, there's public here. I don't know why they don't want to speak. Ricky Enser, newsman and author, when you consider this budget tonight, you might want to remember that you've got more income tax money than you had last year. That means that'll wipe out whatever property tax relief took away from you. So, as I see it, I'm not really concerned what you're spending. I'm just concerned about not raising taxes. We've had a terrific property tax increase just because of assessed values going up over the last five years. Many people pay more than twenty, twenty-five percent more, just on their homes, their businesses, their farms. And frankly, they blame government regardless of what you spend or what you do. There is a couple of little items that I want you to remember when you're considering the budget, even though this probably has to do more with the administration that does the council. Back a few months ago, you approved a committee to determine recommendations for opioid settlement money. Now, that committee hadn't met yet, and I would hope that you would get that committee jump-started because there's a lot of need for people that have drug and alcohol problems, that are homeless. That money needs to be distributed now because you didn't take too much time giving it for public safety raises. And the second thing on Edit, I see something tonight that I haven't seen since they built City Hall here or the jail out there, that the administration wants to use a building corporation funded by Edit. Frankly, I think the hospital and the university need to come up to the gate on that project because we've been indebted enough. And Edit should still be used to bring business and industry to this community. It confounds me to see governments use this to operate government and build public buildings when it needs to be spent on jobs and business and industry. Those are just a few of the things I can think of right now, but hopefully you're not going to raise our taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Enser.
Hi, my name is Sarah Vitale, and my comments are mine and do not reflect the views of my employer. But I wanted to express a little concern about a couple of things. One, it's my understanding that the budget that the administration sent in by the deadline was pretty bare bones and in fact, not what we have before us now. And the rest was submitted as amendments at a much later date. And I think that that is unreasonable for the administration to do to the city council. And I do know that there's a history in the city of receiving negative audits from the State Board of Accounts. And so I hope that when you approve the budget put forth by the administration, that the administration complies with the budget that they've created. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on ordinance thirty dash twenty-five? Moving on to ordinance thirty dash thirty-one dash twenty-five.
Ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-five and ordinance for appropriations and tax rates proposed 2026 Muncie, Indiana Transit System Budget.
Anyone for the audience here to speak on ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-five?
Yes, Ricky Enser, good newsman and author of Muncie. I've been up here countless times to talk about public transportation. Sometimes I use it, and it looks like it needs to go under a major overhaul because outside of transporting kids from public schools or others, there doesn't seem to be much ridership. And as I've said before, they need to test express or some kind of ridership on Sundays, kind of like Bloomington and Lafayette do. When this was founded forty years ago, and I remember that they needed a tax base besides the national company that runs this North American Transit, they haven't changed the system at all. I think something needs to be done to change the system, make it more accommodating to the people besides have some kind of Sunday service. Because again, ten million dollars, and who was it I talked to? Somebody out there that said they're, like everybody else, they're having problems with bus, getting bus drivers and other hired staff. There needs to be some changes because a lot of people don't have rides, can't find a way to go. And what was it the other thing they did lately? Oh, I know. They used to run till nine. Now they run at six. They barely run at all. But it's up to you to decide how much you want to spend on a public transportation system that's kind of fading. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-five? Okay, moving on. Ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-five.
Ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-five and ordinance for appropriations and tax rates proposed 2026 Muncie Sanitary District Budget.
Anyone here to speak on ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-five? Okay, seeing there's no one else. So, the intention of motion to adjourn to seven o'clock. Okay, motion's made by Councilman McIntosh. Is it a second?
It's a return. Okay, so I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Pyle. We'll adjourn until seven o'clock. Welcome to the September eighth Muncie City Common Council meeting. Once again, we'll stand and say the prayers.
We just keep it quiet, huh? In the United States of America, in the free republic of which is this, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone that has discussion on the ordinances that we just reviewed? Public hearing ordinances. Someone that maybe wasn't here when we done it. We had a conflict in The Times. I think the public hearing published in the newspaper stated that the public hearing was proposed for six forty-five. And the Gateway states it was at seven o'clock. So, at this time, we'll allow those who were confused to come up and speak on the ordinances. Anyone?
Hi, Council Alex Kluber. I guess I have to admit I was confused on the time, but I take responsibility for that. I guess I know we're all trying to kind of do our best in the challenging financial situation that we're dealing with, with the property tax stuff. And I know council and administration, I believe, trying to do best, do right by the residents of Muncie. But I guess I was just concerned about the timeliness that the budget for next year is being released by the administration to the public. I feel like it was, I understand it was posted exactly two weeks before today, partly, and then partly in the next day. So I guess I just wanted to register my concern with that. And just given that the whole process kind of has to happen relatively quickly, I just feel like for the public to get a good understanding of the budget, two weeks is pretty compressed. So I guess just hoping that, you know, as a city, we can give the public more, more time to kind of digest that. So, thanks for taking my comment.
What was your name again?
Alex Kluber.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Anyone else? Okay, Councilman Green, if you'll... So, stand please, remove your hats, bow your heads for a word of prayer. Precious heavenly Father, it is with great honor and privilege that we come before thy throne this evening. We thank you, dear heavenly Father, for the elected officials that are here that represent the city of Muncie. We ask, Lord, that you would guide and direct in the task that we have that is set before us. Lord, we know that it's a very daunting task, and, Lord, we need guidance and direction to make wise and great choices. Lord, we ask that you would help us, dear heavenly Father, to do those things tonight that would benefit all members of the society that is here, Lord, in the city of Muncie. Guide and direct, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Okay, citizens' recognition this month will be done by Councilman William McIntosh.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of September, by the city council, our citizenship award, we are happy to give this to Tara Gudger. School counselor, advocate for student success, experienced educator. Tara is a dedicated middle school counselor and athletic director with over three decades of experience supporting the academic, social, and emotional growth of students. Currently serving at Muncie Community Schools, she utilizes her expertise in restorative justice practices, positive behavior intervention supports, which is PBIS, and family engagement to create supportive learning and environment. Her role involves counseling, discipline, assistance, planning athletic events, planning events like family nights, strengthening school-community connections. Tara began her career as a student assistance coordinator at Muncie Community Schools. I know where she worked at. Where she gained extensive experience in student advocacy, attendance, parent engagement. Her early roles include mentoring youth in an after-school program, organizing academic and volunteer workshops during her internship with 21st century scholars. She holds a Bachelor of Social Work for Ball State University. Currently, she is pursuing her master's degree in school counseling. During her academic journey, Tara demonstrated her leadership by mentoring youth, organizing community initiatives, and actively participating in organizations like the Student Social Workers Association, Indiana Black Expo Muncie Chapter, and as a founding member of the Juneteenth Committee. Outside of her counseling role, Tara served as track coach at Muncie Central High School for nearly two decades, where she led and inspired student athletes to countless regional and state championships. Her commitment to empowering and fostering young minds and cultivating resilience underscores her passion for education and community service. Tara believes her greatest accomplishments are her children, Raymond, Tyree, Tyron, Nathaniel, Tamira, and Brendan, and her reason for being so invested in the Muncie youth. I now present y'all with...
I'll just say thank you. Well, I'm loud enough, sorry. I just want to say thank you. It is truly an honor to be recognized. And I do always take this time to reach out to the community. Here in our schools, everywhere I go, this is what I'm going to say because our kids and our staff need the support. I am at Northside, so anytime you want to come and volunteer, just go online. Click the little link in the website to volunteer for a small background check and just come on in and then enjoy the ride. You can go to any other school as well, but because I'm at Northside, I'm always pushing for you to come to Northside. We have a lot of great people in this community, and there's a lot that you can do to advocate for our students and help our students to grow and be more productive in their lives and become great productive students. So, thank you all very much.
Okay, next must present will be Councilman Green. Okay, roll call.
Dishman.
Present.
Selby.
Here.
McIntosh.
Present.
Green.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Garrett.
Present.
Go in.
Here.
Basham.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Okay, approval of minutes of the August meeting.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion has been made by Councilman Selby that would approve the minutes, seconded by Councilman Basham. All in favor?
Green.
Aye.
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 Minutes approved. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions? Any committee reports?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a quick update. The finance committee has met twice of our four meetings. We'll be meeting again tomorrow night to review the budgets for streets, Beach Grove, parks, Prairie Creek. I think that's it, and those are departments that have their own funds. They don't come out of the general fund. And then we'll meet on the twenty-third of this month with the budget to be adopted on the next meeting on the sixth.
The budget meetings, I have been going pretty good. Like the gentleman stated, though, a lot of stuff is kind of being crunched at the last minute. But I remember at our industrial neighborhood meeting in July, or was it June? Anyway, they were concerned about the youth center being rebuilt after twenty-five years. The mayor was at that meeting and also stated that there is added fund money that he was willing to put up for at least five hundred thousand. And looking at some of the budget we have, that one point nine million increase, I was prompted to ask, or Mr. Mason was, I'm sorry, to ask at our Friday budget meeting if he would be willing to continue to support that youth center. And he stated yes, so I'm pleased in that. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other committee reports? Okay, moving on. New ordinances. Ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-five.
Ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-five being an ordinance to amend the city of...
Ordinance 26 dash 25, being an ordinance to amend the city of Muncie Comprehensive zoning ordinance from the R4 Resident Zone to the BC Community Business Zone on premises located at 1600 North Wheeling Avenue, Muncie, Indiana.
Okay, ordinance number 26 dash 25. This ordinance seeks to rezone property located at 1600 North Wheeling Avenue from R4 Resident Zone to BC Community Business Zone to allow for change in use from residential to retail.
Mr. President, I make a motion to introduce ordinance 26 dash 25.
I'll second.
A motion's made, been made by Councilperson Powell, seconded by Councilperson Selby. All in favor? Any discussion? Any discussion from anyone in the audience?
Hey.
Yeah.
May I?
Yes.
Is there a representative from? Is there any representative regarding this? Okay.
Are there any representatives here?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess this rezoning request received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission 7-0. Okay, and it's been, uh, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, ordinance number 27 dash 25.
Ordinance 27 dash 25, being an ordinance to amend the city of Muncie Comprehensive zoning ordinance from the R5 Resident Zone to the BC Central Business Zone on premises located at 718 North Walnut Street, Muncie, Indiana.
Okay, this ordinance seeks to rezone property located at 718 North Walnut Street from the R5 Resident Zone to CB Central Business Zone to match the zoning of adjacent properties and allow for replating after townhomes are constructed. It was, did receive a favorable vote from the Plan Commission. Is there anyone here to speak on this?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt 27-25.
Second. Oh, introduce, yeah, introduce.
Introduce, I'm sorry, introduce.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman.
Basham.
Basham. And seconded by Councilman Selby.
No. No. Goliath.
Hey, sir.
Uh, Jonathan Chandler, I'm co-owner of Crew Properties, Crew Construction, where the owner developer on the site there. Uh, I just didn't have any questions about it. I've got other documentation, I'm not sure what they gave you, but uh, they also asked me if I could, or they told me I could ask if you guys could suspend the rules and vote on that tonight just to expedite the replat process. It doesn't matter, I mean, we'd prefer that, but.
Um, I have a comment.
Okay.
I mean, I really like what you're doing on Walnut Street. I support this project too, and changing, especially with the support of the Delaware Muncie Metropolitan Plan Commission. I like the fact that you're helping expand the property tax base on that street, and you're providing new housing near downtown. And I like that the McKinley President and the Neighborhood Association support you 100%. So with that, I would like to suspend the rules tonight, ask the council to suspend the rules to move uh, this project forward at full speed.
Yeah, I can answer questions.
Mr. President.
So to be clear, we need to vote on the introduction first. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, you made that motion.
And then I will redo the motion.
But I may ask questions before that, correct?
Right.
Correct? Okay, may I?
Yes.
And so what, what do you plan for that property right there then?
Uh, we are currently building townhomes.
It's just the same property that you're already building on?
It's just the very north lot.
Yeah.
The rezone that happened a couple of years ago just ended there, with the R5 CB District.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Um, when you get these built, um, I wish you guys would consider that if you have any violence or any shootings or anything, they will be kicked out of the apartment. Because we just had a shooting at these new ones down there, and I hope they do the same thing.
I don't know how they operate down there. Ours will be owner occupied, it'll be market rate homes. Uh, we're hoping we can get, uh, I don't know, like college professors there, all state teachers. I mean, that's kind of the demographic, I guess, to get in that area, but.
And I'd like to see zero tolerance for any type of violence and stuff like that.
Yeah, sure. But they will be owner occupied, so uh, yeah.
Yep.
Mr. President, shouldn't we vote first and then have discussion? Yeah. Okay, I, I, I understood that we voted first and then had discussion, and, but that's fine.
Yeah, just like a typical introduction.
Okay. Sure.
Any other comments?
I just, I wonder why it's so important to suspend the rules. He didn't give a reason. Though I said this before, um, if it's not detrimental, if we don't have to, don't suspend the rules. I mean, just do it the way it's supposed to be done. We don't really have a reason to suspend the rules other than just to expedite the replat process. Just move along faster.
Yeah.
Mr. President, a question. Who was it that asked, or that told you that?
Uh, the Plaid Committee, I don't remember exactly.
I, I mean, I know that um, Mr. Dishman sponsored this. Did they have, they encouraged you to reach out to him so that he could?
Uh, I talked, I mean, we talked in passing about the project, but not specifically about the rezone and replat.
All right.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question or two, if I may.
You may.
Um, you have an introduction tonight to bring in another section that is there to the north side. Uh, what's your long-term plan? Are you going to go through that section of neighborhood, or is this where you intend to stop?
The, the parcel we're asking for the rezone is currently part of the construction project.
Okay.
We just have to get that rezone so we can replat. They can't split the zone, split the plats with the, it'll be a multi-zoned plat.
Okay.
And so they can't do that. But we do have plans, we would like to do more development there.
Okay. Now, if we suspend and adopt tonight, would this allow you to get the footers in the ground before?
We're under construction. Like, we're, we're setting trusses right now.
Okay, but, but for this next lot, would you be able to do that?
This lot that we're asking for is currently under construction.
It's under construction now, okay.
Part of the development.
Thank you, thank you.
How many units are there?
Uh, seven units total. They're all roughly the same size, two bed, or three bed, two naps, bed, about 1800 square feet. Each one has a two-car detached garage that is alley entrance, so we have all-street parking there. The design, I don't know if you guys have seen anything, but there's a sign out there, it shows a picture of what they look like. But our, our goal was to try to kind of match the architecture of the neighborhood, tie that in, keep it consistent throughout. And then like I said, like, hope to do more, whether that's townhomes or infill, or mixed use, whatever that be.
Um, I just want to make a comment. I always weigh in what the Metropolitan Planning Commission, they're the experts. They know details we probably don't know, and they can answer questions we can't. And the second thing, business-wise, second thing, what the neighborhood wants is my concern. And if this project gets the support, or if the Neighborhood Association, which they sent us all a letter in support of it, I'm in support of it too. Because that's who it would affect immediately, or you know, proximity-wise.
We have a letter, I don't know.
Uh, we've, we've received the letter, sir, thank you.
Okay. So we do have a motion. Okay. It's already been motioned and seconded. Okay, voiceful, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now for the. Motion to, motion to suspend.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made by Councilman Selby, seconded by Councilman Green.
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Powell?
I'm sorry, but no.
Okay. Up for adoption next month.
Is there a reason why we can't, counselor, get everybody's vote on this? I understand it's a bit, I would like to hear everybody's vote on this.
There's no point.
Wouldn't the public like to too?
It's already, it's had to be a unanimous decision. If it's not unanimous, there's no point. Hey. Ordinance number 28 dash 25.
Ordinance 28 dash 25, an ordinance of the city of Muncie amending the traffic schedules set forth in chapter 80 on the city of Muncie Code of Ordinants.
Mr. President, I, um, which one, motion, I'm sorry, what? I make a motion that we introduce ordinance 28 dash 25.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Selby. Yeah, this ordinance seeks to reduce the speed limit from 30 to 25 miles per hour on McKenzie Street, Tyrone Drive, Shell Bark Road, and Bittersweet Lane between Westview Boulevard and Riverside Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Sarah Williams. I live at 504 North McKenzie Street. I'm a 20-year resident of Muncie. I'm here with my nine-year-old son who goes to Westview Elementary. And um, I appreciate you allowing me to send you some information. For those of you who, who um, didn't see my email, I'm just going to point out a few things about uh, traffic safety concerns. Children and school buses are frequently present on those streets. We live within a few bu- blocks of Westview Elementary, um, and that causes increased volume of traffic of non-residents using the street um, either to the school or as a shortcut to or from West, Westview Boulevard and West Riverside. Uh, there are a lack of stop signs on North McKenzie, North Tyrone, North Bittersweet, North Shell Bark, and West, um, at West University Avenue, making a, a nice, long, straight shot for people to increase their speed, maybe without even realizing it. Um, there's a lack of other traffic calming measures, such as speed bumps, flashing signs, or children-at-play signage. There's a lack of sidewalks, um, which with Tilton being 30 miles per hour, I, I find it quite shocking that our streets are also 30 miles per hour, but with no sidewalks. Um, lowering red, speed limits has been directly correlated with fewer and less severe accidents in residential neighborhoods. Uh, people are uh, twice as likely to be killed when they're struck at 30 miles per hour than 25 miles per hour. So I respectfully request that you consider this. My neighbors will be showing up at the October 6th meeting as well. Um, but we'd like to see that speed limit lowered from 30 on those streets to 25. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it's also important to note that the city engineer's been notified of this request and consents to the reduction.
Yes.
Motion's made and seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I heard by saying aye, all opposed saying?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I would like to do something probably a little unprecedented, but for public safety, especially the children. We ran into this a few years ago down on the south side of town, and we circumnavigated uh, some of those that didn't want this to happen. We reduced the speed limit in the school zones. We put up radar detection signs for the safety of the children. And I don't think this thing should wait another 30 days. I think this is something we need to push through for the safety of the children. They're walking to school, the uh, hours that they're walking now is going to be darker, both morning and evening time. And I think for their safety, uh, we would be remiss if we didn't do something about this. And I think we ought to do it tonight, and I'd like to amend that to push it through tonight.
Okay. Well, councils legally permitted to reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour on residential streets without a steady rate.
That's the most suspended.
Yes, I'm making a motion to suspend rules.
I'll second that.
May I just ask one question?
Yes.
Um, Councilperson Powell, I know you're the one who's sponsored this, and you've talked to the neighborhood residents, I just want to make it, can you make it clear that the Neighborhood Association is in support of this?
Yes, um, there have been a lot of emails to me, the Neighborhood Association president has contacted me. Um, we talked to the city engineer about this, and that was all gone. And that's a safety issue, so that's why.
Yeah, I too have received an overwhelming support for this. Uh, the motion's been made and seconded.
Goliath?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to adopt.
Okay, that was made by Councilperson Goliath, seconded by Councilperson Garrett. All in favor? Roll call.
Garrett?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Goliath?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Ordinance number 29 dash 25.
Ordinance 29 dash 25, an ordinance amending chapter 80, traffic schedules of the Muncie Code of Ordinants, University Avenue Parking.
Okay, this ordinance seeks to remove the current restricted parking on University Avenue between Dick Street and North Street, and prohibit parking at any time on both sides of University Avenue.
Um, Mr. President, I move to introduce this for the sake of discussion.
Second. Okay, let me finish reading this first. Dick Street and Reserve Street, and the south side of University Avenue between Wheeling Avenue and Reserve Street. What was your motion?
To introduce it for the sake of discussion.
Say the sex. Okay, motion made by Councilman Selby, seconded by Councilman Green. All in favor? Oh, the discussion, any discussion on this? Anyone here to discuss this?
Good evening. My name is Beth Messner. I am the treasurer of the Riverside Normal City Neighborhood Association. I'm also a resident of this particular neighborhood since 1991, so a longtime resident. Um. The Neighborhood Association vehemently opposes this particular ordinance. In particular, we have great concern with the elimination of parking on University Avenue. Uh, we have a number of reasons uh, for that particular stance. First and foremost, we're not sure what's motivating this particular ordinance. The ordinance itself simply asks or indicates that this is a necessary measure. We don't know why. We don't know why it's a necessary measure. We're not aware of any studies that indicate that this measure is necessary. We assume it may be something to do with a bike lane project that was originally proposed by the university to go down Riverside Avenue. We have been... or down University Avenue. We have been in consultation with Flatland Resources, who's working on that particular project since two thousand twenty-three. We've held neighborhood meetings. We have canvassed our neighborhood. We have surveyed the residents of the homeowners, property owners on University Avenue. Our neighborhood is vehemently opposed to this project, assuming that this is related to the bike lane project. We don't know that. We have no understanding of the motivation. A couple of our big concerns. First of all, with the redevelopment of the... the village right now, parking, more parking is going to become even more necessary. We've been assured by the university that there will be sufficient parking available for the new... the new businesses, the patrons of those businesses. We are still unconvinced that that is indeed the case, which means the elimination of parking on University Avenue makes absolutely no sense, given the amount of traffic that will now be directed toward the new developments in the university village. We also are facing our own internal struggles with parking already. In two thousand twenty-three, the parking on University Avenue was restricted to two-hour parking, again without consultation with our Neighborhood Association, which has forced a lot of the parking from the folks who live in those rentals into the alleys, and we've already seen demolition of garages of historic structures as a result of the restriction to two-hour parking. Eliminating parking will only make this worse. This is a historic neighborhood, one that is already struggling to retain its character because we are at a kind of a saturation point right now in terms of rentals. We're seeing landlords move five, six tenants into properties that originally had two bedrooms. Each of those tenants comes with a car. If you've seen what has happened to the alleys on either side of Neely Avenue when parking was restricted on that particular street to put in the Boulevard, you understand our concern about what is going to happen to our alleys. They will be turned into barren moonscapes as a result of that, and our efforts to maintain the aesthetic character of our neighborhood is going to be severely compromised. We have sent each of the council individuals a full letter explaining our concerns along with the results of the surveys that we have done on... with our neighborhood residents. We are having later in September, on September twenty... hold on, let me get the date right. September twenty-fifth, a meeting at Emerson Dog Park from five to seven P.M. We encourage you all to attend if you are able to speak with our residents about their concerns regarding this particular... this particular proposal. As of now, we are, as I said before, vehemently opposed, and I'm happy to take any questions on behalf of the Neighborhood Association.
Will there be any questions?
I have a question, but I just wanted to commend your residents. I have been overwhelmed by the amount of emails that I've received. I know you put my... encouraged people to contact me, and they have, and so kudos to you guys for being strong self-advocates.
And we certainly will have residents here to speak with you and answer your questions at the October sixth meeting as well.
Councilperson Basham, did you... you sponsored this, correct?
Yes, I did.
Do you know who... who drafted this? Who's... who's behind this, is it?
I came to City Hall and... and... and signed it.
You don't know who drafted it or anything?
No, I don't.
May I ask if anyone has any information about what... what motivated this ordinance? Because we're without a clue.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Messner, tell me about the conditions of the alleys currently.
The condition of the alleys are... are very rough because of the large number of tenants, particularly along University Avenue and now along North Street as well. We find overflowing trash cans. We find potholes. It... Having ridden the trash trucks when we do our neighborhood cleanup on a regular basis, the... the alleys are abhorrent. I can only imagine how much worse they will be if all of that parking is forced into those alleyways. And the... the other, you know, option is North Street, which we are already challenged with an overflow of parking because so many tenants being, you know, being moved into houses that were not designed to hold those... that number of tenants. So we're anticipating that the alley situation will become significantly worse.
One more question. May I follow? So, and then when the trash, when you guys put your trash out, you put them in the alley, so during trash pickup, you guys can't, you know, you're gonna...
Yes, so...
Distract that.
Right, because... because University Avenue is an ambulance run.
Yeah.
We have been asked to place University Avenue trash in the alleyway, so it's not placed on the street.
Yeah.
And so that becomes even more problematic for the trucks to move through because it is a fairly tight alley. Another concern we have is the speed. Right now, we already have problems with speed on University Avenue. We anticipate that with clearing of cars on either side of that avenue, and it's an avenue that we cannot put traffic control measures on because it's an ambulance run. So there's, you know, more stop signs, traffic calming tables. Those things can't happen because of the ambulance run status. So that means we're going to see traffic speeds increasing, and we already have concerns about speeding on that particular road.
Well, so it sounds like maybe it's not Ball State. If you went to City Hall to... to sign, may I ask, I think the administration's here. Mayor, would... do you have any information on where this came from or what... what's behind this? Would you mind coming up? Okay.
I'm happy to yield to the mayor if...
I did, I later.
I'm happy to stand.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Mayor Dan Ridenhour, this has been... University as a trail has been something that, as a trail and connector to downtown, has been something that's been talked about by the Bike Ed Committee, by other committees, and by Ball State, who is here, and by downtown as a desperate desire to have more of Ball State come to downtown. It's been something that's been talked about for thirty years, maybe more than that. We are in the process of, and we've already milled it out now, we're waiting for the concrete work, the curb work to be done so that we can then pave it. Since we were getting it paved, we looked at the ordinance, and the ordinance says from McKinley to Dix that there is parking on University. There is clearly nowhere to park, and that clearly needs to be handled. That you cannot do it. There... there's no room. That is a safety vehicle route, and it wouldn't be safe to have park in there, but the ordinance does say that. So that was one thing that the legal team pointed out and said, "Let's look at fixing that." And then the other part, we had talked, I had not personally, we were doing this through Flatland. We had talked about upgrading Two-Ee Park, and included in that was creating a trail. Phil Tevis of Flatland did indicate that there was some resistance. No reasons were given to me, and that was okay. Just that there was resistance by the neighborhood. They wanted it to be a different route. The route that they... I am told, this is, again, it's secondhand. What I was told is that it was picked to go from what would be Dix up to Riverside, and then Riverside over to Wheeling and down, or over to Riverside and... and one other street, and then down. So it was, if it became to where, it just wasn't affected. If you're... if you are a student, or if you're a faculty member of Ball State University, it's probably not going to be where you're going to walk out of that village development, whatever it would be, whether it was a restaurant or something else, and see the sign that says, "Go north," three blocks, two or three blocks to Riverside, then take Riverside, and then come back down. University is... is where it seems to make the most sense. So I wanted to bring this forward. I said, "We've got to fix the..." You can't, you should not be allowed to park between McKinley and Dix. Let's just go to the council, see what we can figure out on the rest of it. Now, I will tell you that over the last twenty-seven days, I've been doing some research, and I have packets here. I... I have several days to where we went through and we counted how many cars were parked on Wheeling, and we even looked at the license plates to determine, are these homeowners? Because if it was overwhelmingly homeowners, we would look at it differently, but it was overwhelmingly students. And the landlord should be providing, in our opinion, the landlord should be providing parking for those students. And every single one of them, we went up and down the alleys, every single one of them, and I have photographs here. There's large packets here for the council with some photographs, but I have photographs showing that every single one of these houses has access to the alley. It runs all the way through, and most people, overwhelmingly most people, are parking in the back of the house. Very few people are parking in the front. In fact, I'll give you the numbers. The... the... there were two people parked on the street on... oh, I don't have the dates in front of me. They're in the rest of the packet. There were two people parked, I think it was August sixteenth. There were three co... three cars parked on University on August twenty-second. There was one car parked on University on August twenty-ninth. There were three cars parked on University on another day. I can't remember which day it was, and then September fourth, there were two. So it was a total of eleven cars during five different days over a twenty-seven-day period of time. We felt like that seemed reasonable to come to the council and say, "Look, this may be an opportunity of something that would help our downtown local businesses, would connect Muncie and Ball State further, and it's not inconveniencing a whole lot of people." Now, clearly, the neighborhood as a group, and I don't know where our first speaker lives, but clearly, it's not something that the neighborhood is interested in doing at this particular time, but I think as I go through this, what we did is we looked at the license plates of the cars, and eight of those eleven cars were out-of-county plates, indicating to me they were most likely students. I don't have a guarantee, and we're not... we're not going into that. I'm not checking somebody's license plate to see where their registration is. I just wanted to see, are they eighteen plates, meaning Delaware County, or are they plates from another county? Eight of the eleven, in that of those five checks, those five days that we looked, eight of the eleven were out of... out of county plates. So that meant only three, which is less, which is only point-six per day, were parking on the street. So I understand there's a concern, but as we looked at it, it... the concerns seem much less after we did our research. The concerns seem much less warranted after we did our research. Very few people of the forty-eight homes that are on the south side of University, only point-six are parking in those spots. So I would like, over the next thirty days, thirty-four days, whatever it is, however much till the next meeting, for this council to consider it. I have... I have photographs of every single car that was parked on the streets when we did these tests. I've got them for several days. I also show alleys. I... I... so I have all this information. I also have letters of support from Ball State University, although I think they're here to kind of indicate what... what additional things they'd like to partner with us on this, and really create a legitimate connection from Ball State to downtown Muncie. And I also have letters of support from the Muncie Arts and Culture Commission, because I'm going to give you these packets. Lacy, can you? Yeah. It's just as a little summary, kind of what I talked about, but it also has the letters of support from those three organizations, which are Downtown Development, Ball State University, and the Muncie Arts and Culture. And then it also shows some examples of what some... what Ball State is offering to do, and Chris, you're welcome to come up if you'd like. But what Ball State is wanting to do is take some resources that they have and create a true connection to where there are very clear and obvious and artful connectors between each of those streets at... along the street. So painted crosswalks, now maybe even a little beyond that. Ball State is considering... oh, thank you. My agenda. But that... that is something I would like for you to do. I... I can pass you out. It's about this high. It completely filled my bookcase, or I can get... or my briefcase, but I... or I can give them to you after the meeting. Really, this is just for introduction. My hope was that we could have a serious discussion on how much are we truly inconveniencing homeowners? That's a concern of mine. Students are very important, and we love the students and what Ball State brings to our community, but I'm a little less concerned about them because they're not the homeowner, and the landlord should be providing the parking. And that's... that was my view of it.
So, oh. Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
My question is not for you. Is that okay? Can I ask Ms. Messer a question? Is that okay, Mr. President? Yes. Can you come forward, please? Yeah. So, Ms. Messer, I... I... yeah, come on to the podium. Yeah, it's your turn now. Yeah. Okay, so I remember being in one of those meetings in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four with Flatland. Am I saying this correctly, that your Neighborhood Association is willing to give up the parking if and only if there's bike lanes with safety guard dividers? Like, you would give up your parking if the bike lanes are done with, like, concrete, something, so they protect the bikers? So there's a barrier between the biker and the cars. Is that correct?
Let me first say that our Neighborhood Association supports bike lanes.
Yes.
Our opposition is to a bike lane on University.
Okay.
The last meeting that we had with Flatland Resources.
Okay.
Flatland was listening to our concerns, reported our concerns back to the university, came back to us. This was in September, I'm sorry. This was in November of two thousand twenty-three, and indicated that the university would be willing to consider moving the bike lane to Beechwood, which has no parking already and is a sufficiently wide street, or to University Avenue, which allows it to make use of property already owned by the university.
I'm sorry.
And that is Riverside, yes. And that was the last we heard. We assumed our voices were heard, and we assumed that that was the plan. So this shift back to Riverside or to University Avenue comes as a great surprise to us. I also would like to indicate that, yes, we support bike lanes with safety measures. It is our understanding, however, that, given the funding available, and I may be misspeaking because obviously, we've been left out of this conversation for a significant period of time, that the bike lanes were going to consist of striped, painted bike lanes, not bike lanes with security measures in them because the funding for that was not available at the time that we were having these conversations. We do support bike lanes. Many of our members are bikers, so we're not opposed to that in general. We're opposed to the placement of it on University Avenue, a street that already is sufficiently busy, that already is an ambulance run, and now, from our understanding, that is now going to contain unsecured bike lanes that simply consist of painted lines on a street that's already got high-level... that's already got high levels of very speedy traffic. As for the parking survey, because in September of 2023, University Avenue was shifted to two-hour traffic, or two-hour parking, most of the residents are now forced to park in the alley. We've already seen the demolition of garages. We've seen drives and backyards gravelled over as a result of that. So I'm not surprised that the number of people parking on University right now is low. I also note that at least one of those days was on a weekend. Most of the students are gone on weekends. So, so yes, there are a few people parking on University because they've already been prevented from parking as they normally would have parked before that two-hour limit was placed on University. And we've already seen significant degradation to the backyards and alleys in our historic neighborhood because of that change. We're expecting worse when it's eliminated altogether.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
My name is Jim Lee. I live at 1401 West University. I'm just four houses east of the village. I think that there's a fair amount of cruising of fast cars, trucks, motorcycles through the village on University Avenue. The Italian restaurant La Casa Cole closed recently, and there's an Indian restaurant going in there, but I think about three restaurants back, I believe it was a Mexican restaurant, and they had sufficient business that cars often parked down University Avenue. And when they did that, it was really difficult for us to pull out onto University because our vision was blocked until we were into the lane of traffic. We can't go out through the alley because students have stolen our patio furniture twice, so we had to put up a tall gate and keep it locked to keep patio furniture. But the development of the village, the new buildings and such, I fear that more, there'll be more parking on University Avenue. I would also think that the police fire emergency vehicles would rather have a clear boulevard coming down, they're in a rush to get to the hospital or to the university, would rather have a clear boulevard to their destination. So for that reason, I support the abandoning of parking on University Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Hi, Council, Cameron Grubbs. I, there's so much going on here, and, and to be honest, this, this ordinance itself may not be that big of a deal, although University, you know, it's high traffic. My problem with what's happened here, what I'm seeing, Mr. Basham, is that, are you telling me that you showed up to sign an ordinance and had zero questions simply because you were asked to? You didn't even know that you signed it, so I don't know what you're talking about.
I, I am not telling you that.
Mr. Mayor, you talk about transparency. Why are you showing up to council now with the packets? Nobody's got anything. Like, you're going to waste their time and our time to sit there and show them what's going on now? Why not do that beforehand? Why not have meetings? Like, I know that we get a lot of this whole, this is how we've always done it. Well, why does it always have to be that way? We can show people things, we can show maps, we can get, we obviously didn't talk much to the, the neighborhood association, and I'm going to call you out, Mr. Mayor, because you said it was all in the ordinance, but all it says is, "Whereas it has been determined that it is necessary to update Chapter 80, traffic schedules within the Muncie City ordinances, and whereas the city of Muncie desires to update Chapter as it relates to parking on University Avenue." There is zero, zero in there about what you were talking about. And just to, you treat these, these students as those who are less than. It's, to be honest, reprehensible, because you, just because they're here for maybe four years, I don't care if they're here for six months. They have a voice, and they should be heard, they should be asked, and not just thrown off because they're not going to be here in four years. Thank you, Council.
Could I say something, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes. I came to the City Hall and had a conversation with the mayor. I knew he was going to be here tonight, and I knew that he had a presentation to make. And so I, I knew that he was going to be there, and that's why I spoke as I spoke. But I had the conversation ahead of time before we signed it, and I knew he would go to, he was going to be here to explain.
Hi. My name is Sarah Vitale, and the remarks that I express are my own and not those of my employer. I'm, I'm feeling really concerned, too. You know, Mr. Basham, regardless, if you knew about our ordinance ahead of time, it would have been great to share it with your colleagues so that people would have had time to think about it. But, you know, what's more than that is, I really hope none of you are, well, I want to encourage you not to be bamboozled by the misuse of numbers masquerading as scientific study. A few people walking down a street on a couple different days, taking pictures in alleys, does not a study make. It's, it's irresponsible to call that research, especially, and I would, and I would really hope that Ball State had nothing to do with that study, or if they did, I hope they used a kind of scientific rigorous method in looking into traffic and, or looking into all of these issues in that neighborhood. So I think that whatever is in that packet, if it's, if the, the summary we received from the mayor reflects it, it's not, it's not rigorous. And so it's something that you could just, you know, go take a walk down, you know, Rivers, or University by yourself. And I think that we should all really take the issue with, like, we should be concerned with what Dr. Messner said about that their neighborhood association has been working carefully, they have been talking to the developer, and then all of a sudden, they're not aware of this tonight. So, I mean, I'm, I think this is really, really troubling, and I encourage all of you, just on the basis of that, to vote against introducing this ordinance tonight, and let it be introduced once there's a rationale, a reasonable rationale presented. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, Senator, State Attorney.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Chris Palladino. I'm the Director of Real Estate Services at Ball State University. And we've heard a few things about the village project this evening, and maybe I can provide some clarification to some of the issues that were raised. There's a lot of exciting things happening with the village development, and one thing I wanted to point out was that improving connectivity between the village and downtown has always been an important goal for the overall strategy. For that reason, last week, Ball State University issued a letter of support for this ordinance being introduced this evening. You have a copy of that letter in your packet, but there are some excerpts I'd like to read from that letter, which might provide some clarification to some of the issues that were raised here this evening. Our college and community collaboration grant with the Lilly Endowment references the goal of creating a stronger physical connection to downtown Muncie. The city's investment into new street paving, sidewalk improvements, and new bicycle lanes will help achieve this. With the Lilly Endowment grant, Ball State University will provide supplemental funds to enhance the crosswalks along University Avenue. We have seen effective crosswalk designs using colored thermoplastic to create a more artistic, appealing, and safer routes for pedestrians and cyclists. We will work with your team to create a similar, unique design along University Avenue. And at this point, I should point out that we did include, and it's in your packet, several photographs of this treatment in application. Not only do they create effective designs, in our opinion, but, one important point, they significantly improved safety. More visibility, higher concentration of these crosswalks, they create a natural traffic coma. We've seen this application used very effectively in parts of Indianapolis. Reading from the letter, "In addition, Ball State wants to strengthen the connection along Martin Street between the Village and White River Greenway. We know the existing shared has been well-maintained. Ball State University will install new landscaping along this path in conjunction with the new residential development currently under construction. We will then assume responsibility for permanently maintaining this planting strip along the shared-use path, similar to how we maintain the planting areas along Neely Avenue between campus and Wheeling Avenue." One final point I wanted to address, we did hear this evening some comments about the loss of parking and potential negative impacts on the village, and that is a very realistic concern, and that's something we've paid very close attention to during our time working on this project. As you may recall, two months ago in July, the council unanimously approved an ordinance that changed some of the parking restrictions for on-street parking in the village. What used to be blue permit parking only in the core of the village has now been updated to be two-hour public parking. That change, in addition to some of the new on-street parking regula, additions that we are making with our projects, will add about 80 new on-street parking spaces in totality to the village. So I'm sympathetic to Mr. Lee when he says there have been issues in the past of people wanting to come to the restaurant and have them to park on University Avenue. By changing some of the rules that were in place, by adding additional public on-street parking, we think we are making a significant improvement towards that issue in the village. So in summary, I just want to say Ball State wants to be a community partner in this. We look forward to continuing our collaboration with the community on this initiative. Thank you all.
Smack it at 700 West University. He's a pretty slick talker from Ball State. My only question is, prior to the Lilly grant, what evidence is there that Ball State has done anything for the city of Muncie there?
He's the director, his comments to us.
I mean, I've seen no evidence. I've lived on University for a couple decades. I see absolutely no evidence that Ball State has done anything for downtown Muncie up until this supposed Lilly grant. So what have they done? I mean, all I see is this invisible line around Ball State and then the rest of Muncie outside of it. That's what I see as a resident. You know, I don't see kids coming from Ball State, I see kids going to Ball State.
Okay, Mr. Smakers, let's keep our comments towards what we're discussing.
That's what we're discussing. We just heard from Ball State the reason why Dale Basham introduced us, and he knew why. My question is, Nora Powell is our district committee member, and she doesn't, knows nothing about it. She didn't know it was coming. Why didn't she get it and take it to the neighborhood association, who apparently the ball was dropped two years ago, when Ball State decided to go do something else? Now they've decided they want to come back and eliminate the parking, and everybody's rolling over like they always do because Ball State wants something. And I'm embarrassed that nobody went through the proper channels. I mean, why didn't Nora Powell be told about this along with Dale Basham from the mayor? Why didn't our district committee member be part of this? Why was she excluded? Because she's a Democrat? Is that why the mayor avoided her? I don't know. That's a good question. Go ahead and pound the hammer all you want, but it's the truth. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or concerns?
Okay, motion has been made in second. In favor, signify by saying yes.
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 All right. You go ahead and do a show of hands.
You might want to have them.
Okay, let's do a show of hands, because this, this thing goes. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And I know it looked like I voted twice.
I know.
I was just, I was just, you know, raising my right hand.
May I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Regarding this ordinance, like I mentioned earlier, may I, Mr. President, the one that we just voted on?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to see the neighborhood association and administration and Ball State University get together and figure something out. This project did not start yesterday. I remember being in those meetings at Minitrista with Flatland. This was, this discussion's been going on for two years. And so I'm sure there's a way to solve this. One of the things that I would, I would feel comfortable with, if we do eliminate parking, that those alleys, they need to be redone. And I do believe that's a street department. Do we have the money to make the alleys safe so, or drivable? Because I've driven down the alleys sometimes when we had our neighborhood cleanups, the water would be sitting there in those holes stagnant. So there are so many elements that need to be addressed. It's not just eliminate parking or keep parking. So I hope everybody can get together and come up with a good plan when you come to us next meeting, so we can vote on something that's agreeable for everyone. So thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, moving on. We have ordinances 30-25, 31-25, and 32-25.
Want me to read them all at the same time?
Well, these ordinance seek approval of the proposed budgets
Okay.
of the city of Muncie, Muncie Sanitary District, and MITS for 2026.
Or.
Can we introduce all at once?
You're going to introduce all at once? One at a time. Ordinance 30-25, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates proposed 2026, Muncie Civil Budget.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make a motion that we introduce 30-25.
I accept that. I second that, sorry. Okay, motion is made by Councilman Basham, seconded by Councilman Garrett. Any discussion? 30-25.
Christopher Bilbrey. I was here at the, or I wasn't, I, I watched the, I don't know if I was here or not, at the second, no, I was here at the second Finance Committee meeting, when you guys talked to the controller, and one of the councilors was not here, Mr. Dishman, but the rest of you were. And I was interested when you guys brought up a couple of positions that last year, you guys decided in a vote of six to three to unfund. You unfunded three positions last year, and at least two of those positions came back up, and they're now being funded, and you guys didn't make any mention of cutting those. And so I'm assuming, unless something else happens, I know you still have a little bit of work to do, but I, I mean, are you guys, does anybody know, are you guys looking at keeping those funded through the general fund, or is that something, you know, where, where are you standing on that? That's, you haven't made any cuts to that, correct?
There was one, there was one mistake and error, just a, an additional number in the controller's overtime, but other than that, we still are in the process of receiving information from the department heads, and then we will have about a week to digest that individually, and then come together on the 23rd to make recommendations from the committee on reductions. But I want to also say that any member, I mean, they're, just because the committee makes or doesn't make, any member of council is, is able to make a motion to amend any ordinance, so.
Am I correct in, in saying that you guys have only so far made one reduction? Is that correct?
We've only, we've only definitely said, and that was a voluntary
Yeah.
reduction from the controller, but yes, that's correct. As a committee, yes.
Okay.
I don't, I don't pretend to know what individual council persons
Sure.
are thinking.
Sure.
Are thinking.
But, yeah.
Yeah, real quick, that was seven to two on that vote. I just want to make sure.
Say that again.
Seven to two on that vote.
Seven to two?
Yes.
From last year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Cameron Grubbs again. So I just want to ask, just for transparency purposes, can you explain kind of a little bit about what the process is that you're going through here? Because to regular people, it might be interesting to know how we're voting to accept a budget that we're still working on trying to hammer out. So is this just basically the, like, the numbers that we're taking in, this is how much we're doing? And just if somebody would mind explaining that.
Could you clarify that question for me?
Just like the process that we're in right now, that you're, so is this, the process of accepting this ordinance is just basically the numbers? Like, if you can just explain for the public, I guess.
The municipal budget, and Craig, please correct anything that I'm wrong, the municipal budget is created by the administration, the council reviews it. The numbers for the tax draw are available in June from May, and then the, the administration gets some numbers from DLGF for the miscellaneous revenue, but they create those other numbers in regards to different taxes and permit fees and things along those lines. So by the time, hopefully, and we had our meeting on August the 5th, and hopefully shortly after that, the budget will be created and filed. The sooner the better, of course. And then the Finance Committee, which is all nine council members, go to work reviewing the budget line items, for the most part, line by line, kind of seeing where we fall and try and close that gap between expenses and revenue. And so everything's on the table. There's a lot of discussion, there was a lot of discussion last, last week. And then we will come together to talk about any amendments that we feel need to be made. Senate Bill 1 is obviously, you know, SB 1 is obviously rearing its ugly head. Mayor Ridenhour had a press conference to talk about how we are going to be entering into a hiring freeze. We're going to be encouraging full-time to go to part-time, which is never a pleasant thing. We're going to have employees that will potentially have to forego their benefits and things along those lines. And so the budget is due to the state no later than November the 1st, and so we will be adopting our budget on October the 6th. And any amendments that are adopted, because I'm sure that, you know, that whatever we come up with, they will need to be adopted by the council, then those will all go to Lacy and, and the controller, and they will submit those changes to the, to the state. Are, is, was that kind of clear?
Well, I just was kind of wanting, like a general explanation, and I'll clarify from, that I was saying that.
May I add one thing, sir? Tonight is just, and to introduce the budget.
Yes, that's what I was about to say.
And we are overlapping the budget hearings with that, this introduction tonight. We will continue to work with the administration and council as we have conversations tomorrow night. And then again, in about a week. And then finally, next city council meeting, we will finally adopt based on the Finance Committee's recommendations on the 25th, is that right?
The 23rd is when we will meet and talk about, and anytime we meet, because there are nine of us, it has to be a, a formal meeting to, so that we don't violate open-door laws. But it is really tricky. You are absolutely correct. We are trying to, and it's, it's very difficult because we are in active negotiations with our three collective bargaining units. We're adopting a budget and we have no idea what those expenses might be. And so it, it does mean that we have to look very carefully at, at areas where we can cut. Last year, Mr. Mason made a, a motion, and that money that was eliminated from the general fund is what made it possible for the police and fire to get their 5% raise. So those strategies are beneficial, you know, and we were able to keep some of those employees on through edit. So, you know, our, our goal is of course going to be to tighten, tighten the belt as much as possible while still be able to provide services and also take care of our employees. So.
And the, and like you said, this is just to, to introduce, but again, if we don't take in that budget by October 6th, right, we revert back to last year, correct?
If for some reason we, we don't adopt a budget on October 6th, we have until November 1st, so President Mason could call a special meeting. If the budget is not submitted to the state by November the 1st, then yes, we will revert back and have the 2025 budget next year. While that sounds like it's just a housekeeping issue because we can appropriate additional monies into those line items, that, while that, that you, we can do that, but when we revert back, we not only revert back to the line items as far as expenses, we revert back to the line items as far as income. And so if we don't do our job, then there's a possibility that we could lose any income that we did make, so increases in lit. Unfortunately, we didn't get property tax, but normally any, any increases in property tax, we would, we would see forfeited. And so that's why it's really important that, and that's why we started our meetings prior to this meeting with introduction, because of, I mean, it's, especially with the holiday, it's only three weeks until we'll be adopting.
Right.
It's, it's very, very important that we receive the budget in a timely manner.
And to that point, I know it was kind of pushed back for reasons, and, but like, the earlier the better. And would be nice to kind of have something, is there any kind of way to put in an ordinance that says it has to be submitted by such and such date? That might be an option. The, I would ask, if I could ask as a, as a citizen, because it's been plain to me for some time now that the city of Muncie needs this, is that if we're going to budget money for information, can we have a, an information officer, public information officer? Not a, not just somebody that is a PR person for the mayor, but somebody that puts out information for the council, that helps to facilitate this, that works with the, the clerk and everything like that to make sure that everybody gets the information, that has the information, and doesn't get comments that don't need to be made. I'd make that ask. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No. Oh, okay.
Okay, so for ordinance 30-25.
Pretty well. That's the one we just did?
No, we have to, we have to do one. We have to do one at a time.
Yeah. Motion's already been made and seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? All opposed?
Mr. Fredrick, have you a question? Mr. Gibson, should we amend the budget pieces that we received after the deadline into the budget ordinance tonight, or?
That is up to you.
And so we received all of Form 1 and Form 2, so we received the budget expenses and the income, is that correct, Lacy? So I make a motion that we amend ordinance 30-25 to include the Form 1 and Form 2 that were turned in after the deadline, to be included in the, in the complete budget packet. Was, was Form 4 in there as well? I make a motion to amend the budget so it includes Form 1, Form 2, Form 3, and Form 4B.
I'll second that.
That's an easier way to do it than try and find out which ones were.
Motion's been made and seconded, and we amend the 30-25 to include Forms 1, 2, 3, and 4B. Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Dishman?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Go in. Yes.
Yes.
So now do we need to make a motion to introduce the budget as amended? Or will that, no? Okay, thank you.
Hey. Appreciate having you there.
Ordinance 31-25. Ordinance 31-25, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates proposed 2026 Muncie, Indiana Transit System Budget.
Mr. President, I make a motion to introduce ordinance 31-25.
Okay, motion's made by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman McIntosh. Is there anyone here to speak on this?
I make a motion to amend ordinance 31-25 so it includes Form 1, Form 2, Form 3, and Form 4B.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, that'd be ordinance 31-25 adds 1, 2, 3, and 4B.
Correct.
Roll call.
Garrett?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Powell? Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, 31-25.
Amanda Price, General Manager for Mitts. I was just here, if anybody had any questions.
General Manager for?
Mitts.
Mitts.
I'm going to ask a question that comes up every time we talk about your budget. Is there any, any way that we could start providing services or provide bus service on Sundays?
It's not really a question of money as much as it is a question of drivers. We are still struggling with that. We were, we were pretty good and then we lost a couple in a week, so.
All right, that's hopeful. Thank you.
What would you say your percentage of ridership is right now?
Our ridership has been increasing. It took a, a large dip after COVID, but we have been increasing each year since then, so. And with Ball State not hiring any, not having their own driver or trainer for CDL, and then moving to more of the smaller vehicles that you don't have to have a CDL, we're seeing an increase in the number of students at Ball State that are getting on our buses, the Ball State buses are full.
Does that include the high schools, middle schools as well?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If you had drivers, is there a plan to include Sundays?
We have been focusing on our facilities since I took over because they had not been focused on, put it like that, like we had to get a new roof on the administration. It was original to the building, our bus wash is original to the building. We've made significant progress on that. The bus wash is in the capital for next year, so perhaps in another year or two, then that would have, when we've taken care of our buildings and facilities, we could be in a better position to look at increasing the hours back to nine o'clock, possibly adding a Sunday.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
All in favor of adopting ordinance?
Introduce.
Introducing. Sorry. 32-25.
Aye. 31, 31, 31.
31-25. Is that what I said?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
32-25.
Ordinance 32-25, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates of proposed 2026 Muncie Sanitary District Budget. Mr. President, I make a motion to introduce this budget.
Second. A motion's been made by Councilman Greens, seconded by Councilman McIntosh. Is there anyone here to speak on that?
Hi, Deana Cox, Financial Manager for Muncie Sanitary District. I'm just here if you have any question.
Anyone have any question? Okay. Then there's no further questions, we'll do a vote. All in favor of 32-25, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 16-25.
Resolution 16-25, a resolution of the city of Muncie, Indiana relating to the financing of a fire station project and approving a form of taxpayer petition in connection therewith.
Make a motion. This resolution is the initial step toward the approval and financing of a new fire station on Tillison Avenue to replace Station 5.
Mr. President?
Yes.
In the spirit of finishing our budget and making the resolution, or I, I, I would be in favor of delaying our focus from Resolution 16-25, and I would like to table this resolution.
So it hasn't been introduced yet. We could also draw it and then file it next month, whatever you, whatever you prefer.
I think that, I think I'd prefer to do that. Yes.
Then there's no motion to bring it off the table, just.
That's perfect. That's perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. 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 We'll be on, we'll take your comments.
Did we vote?
Did we vote?
We didn't vote.
You don't have to.
I just pulled it off, never mind. Thank you.
You can have it on your own.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take public comments at this call.
Alan Hornblaw and Catherine Mitchell, Muncie Public Library.
Thank you. Good evening. Alan Hornblaw, Library Director, and with me is Catherine Mitchell, our Assistant Director, and also our Treasurer. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about our budget. Muncie City Council is the fiscal body for non-binding review. We have a governing board that approves our budget, so this is more of an FYI for you folks. Our budget is set to be approved at December, at the September 19th Library Board of Trustees meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about our budget.
Just out of curiosity, how, has it, has it changed or is it pretty much staying the same? Do you know?
Well, there's a 4% growth quotient, so our levy is going up, but our circuit breaker is going up twice as much as the growth quotient, so our budget will actually be a little bit less than, than it is the current year.
Is that going to cause any programs or anything to be dropped or anything?
No, we don't anticipate that. The wild card is miscellaneous revenue, so if it continues, we should be moving forward.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Could you describe the conditions of our current public libraries in general? If you can just mention a public library and the conditions in your opinion.
We have five buildings, four locations for the public. Our Kennedy Library just won the Muncie Quest for the Best Award as the best library in Delaware County, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Our Mary Hunt Library is doing well. We also, in that building, house Great Achievers Program, which is funded by federal money that was just released by the state to us, so we're happy about that. And every third, every fourth grader that's in the program this year were third graders last year, and they all passed the IRE test. We're very proud about that program. Our Centennial Library was just renamed in July. It was Connection Corner, now it's Centennial Library to go back to its original name and let folks know exactly its location. It's across Longfellow. original name and let folks know exactly its location. It's across Longfellow and does a great job, uh, there in, in meeting the needs of the kids, and they have all kinds of, uh, activities there. And of course, our, our Carnegie Library is an anchor for the, uh, cultural arts renovation downtown, and, uh, we'll be doing more work with that. And on November sixth, we'll be having a little party to celebrate our hundred-fiftieth anniversary there at Carnegie, and, uh, we got permission to close the streets and have a light show among other things, so, uh, we invite you all to those. And we do have, uh, another building, the Hunt Building on Memorial, and that's used by the Friends primarily, and they just had a book sale recently.
Yeah.
And, um, so we partner with the Friends of the Library on that.
Thank you.
Are you sure your Centennial Library went back to its original name?
Yeah, it was the Centennial Branch when it first opened, and it's now the Centennial Library. It's gone through a few name changes over the year. It was named after, uh, Virginia Conley for a period of time, and it closed.
Why?
Or Vivian Conley, I'm sorry. And then, um, it came back as Connection Corner, and we decided to, to change that name to more reflect its library status and not, uh, people didn't quite know what Connection Corner was, so, uh, we went back to its original.
So would it be a possibility to rename it the Vivian Conley Centennial Branch Library?
We, uh, asked the family years ago when it, before it was Connection Corner, and they did not want it renamed after Vivian Conley, so we, um, acknowledged their, uh, their desire and, and went with a different name.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, recently, the council, um, annexed Westminster. Were you able to resolve the library card issue for Westminster?
We thought we had, but today we have. We had a meeting with lawyers today.
I've been working on that, so let me speak to that. So yes, we actually decided to pull, go to our library lawyer and ask them to take it over because I have gone through what I thought were all the hoops, and I keep getting some, uh, some pushback that we aren't, you know, different places say, oh, well, you need to have this, but then other things say that you don't need that. Indiana Code doesn't say I need this, but like, uh, thank you, by the way, Mayor, for that letter that you gave us, even though Indiana Code says nothing about needing a letter, um, to okay our annexation, because we actually aren't under the city, uh, as you guys know, because we don't show up in your budget. Uh, but, uh, we've just hit a lot of roadblocks, and so we've asked our lawyer, could you take it from here and make sure this gets done, because, uh, we are really excited, and the Westminster group is raring to go. Um, we've had people from Heron Point, that's a part of it that isn't in, in our area yet, come to us, and, um, we're raring to go too. It's just, we gotta, you know, saw it all the I's and crossed all the T's, and, um, there seems to be confusion over what exactly those are, the, the dots and the crosses that need to happen.
One of the issues is the state considers us the Muncie Center Point Public, uh, Center Township Public Library. I think my place is mixed up sometimes. Um, so, the, uh, Westminster is in Harrison Township, so that's why we have to get all these approvals to, you know, bring them on board. So if it was just the City of Muncie and the surrounding, uh, part of its jurisdiction, then it wouldn't be an issue, but because it's Harrison Township and not Center Township, that's why we have this problem.
Are you hopeful?
We are very hopeful, and we know it's going to happen. It's just a matter of, we were hoping it would happen like four or five months ago.
Right.
So, yeah.
Good, good.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to ask a question, if I may, uh, concerning your budget, line item three fifty-two. Uh, hundred, if you don't mind, uh, it's at a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and I would like to know, uh, because Kennedy Library has, uh, a very step forward above the rest of the city right now. I, I love the solar panels that are in your parking lot, and I would like to know how much cost that offsets for your electric and how that is affecting, uh, that library as a whole. Has it brought that down? Was the expense greater than you anticipated? What's your savings?
Unfortunately, it doesn't generate much, uh, electricity at all, and so there is very little savings whatsoever.
So, uh, I could speak to this. Uh, the solar panels were put in originally. Uh, it was meant to be a, um, an example to the community of what can be done and what the capabilities are that are out there, and that was years ago that that was already available. Um, but because there are so many businesses in that area, there's a lot of issues with the wiring and the electrical wiring and stuff in that area, and it does cause some issues with being able to actually draw the power from the solar panels into the building. It has to do with where it's located. Um, so, uh, I know it can generate, you know, some of the studies that I saw when they were working on it, because people have asked me a lot about those solar panels, uh, is that, uh, like if we had put it over where Centennial Library is, it would have powered most of that library's electricity, uh, because it didn't, you know, it didn't have the electrical wiring stuff, but then it wouldn't have been seen as much.
True.
By people in the community. It was put where it was, so it was a high-traffic area, and people would, it would keep it in people's minds that, hey, solar is an option. It's a valid option. So, um, that's kind of why.
Okay. Do you know about what year that was put in, what, what year it was installed?
Um, I'm trying to remember. Oh, it's.
It's been a long time. I know that.
It's been a long time. Was it like, I think it's when they were last, I think it was around the same time they did the Kennedy remodel, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, so maybe like two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, something like that, but I'd have to look at the paperwork. I don't really remember off the top.
I know they made advances in the collector systems, uh, leaps and bounds from where it was then, where it generates a lot more electricity, but I just wondered if you did the data on that.
We don't, unfortunately, as you mentioned, it's been there for, uh, it has been there for quite some time, uh, so it's actually been updated. The stuff has been updated to the point that it, the software that would tell us that information is no longer functional, like it's not kept up or anything. It's lapsed into, you know, not really being usable. I have some screenshots of, and I have some, um, some how-tos on how to read it, but it doesn't help us to know how to do it if it doesn't exist.
I, I think I was told at one time that, uh, about a half a day's worth of electricity is generated per month.
Okay.
So it's very little.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlize Jamison?
Evening, Council. Um, I have had a few conversations with Counselor Garrett, and I've raised this issue a couple of times, uh, previously, and it has to do with the, the old Chevy plant and, uh, the condition that it's in at the present time, and also some concerns that I've seen out in the public, uh, regarding the common market and, um, and the, uh, zoning issues that they seem to be battling, uh, that could lead to some exorbitant costs. And so Counselor Garrett, if you have an update, or if anyone else at the, on the council has an update, it'd be great to hear it.
I've had an update on both. Uh, with the Chevy plant, I speak to the, I spoke to the mayor, uh, last weekend, today. Um, they have the fitting company coming in to, to repair the fence. Uh, they have a, someone to come in and start cleaning up and, and, revitalizing the property, but we can't, they won't do it until the fence is repaired. So, uh, we, they, I have been told that we have someone in place to repair the fence, so they can get in and move from there. So that's all I know from there. I know that the fence is being repaired, and then after that, we can move forward. And I spoke to Mr. Martin today, and I've been speaking with him quite frequently over this issue. He meets with the, uh, with some, uh, with the Fire Chief tomorrow. He is very, uh, happy with the, um, well, I'd say pleased with the conversations he's had and what he has, uh, been given the back and forth with. He's been very pleased with it. Um, we will know more tomorrow, um, about where we have to go, but as of today, I spoke to Mike, and he is very, um, hopeful about the conversation tomorrow and where it will lead with the common market. Um, so I have spoken with Mike and the mayor on both of those, both of those issues. Um, both seem to be moving forward, um, more, um, and another to bring up Mr. Martin, I don't want to speak for him, but I spoke to him today. Um, I, I would say very hopeful is, is, uh, the way I, I would say that if he was here, he, he would say the same thing, and I don't want to speak for him, but he told me he's very hopeful with the, um, conversations that he's had that will lead up to tomorrow's conversation. And he said he will call me after tomorrow to tell me how that goes and where we are from there, and then I will call you and let you know how that goes, and then if anybody else has any questions, my phone's always open. I will let you know how that conversation went, um, with what he allows me to say. Yeah, yeah.
I'll just put a placeholder in for next meeting to ask.
You go ahead and call me. I, I, it's always nice talking to you. It is. It's, it's always nice.
Troy Waters.
Good evening. I'm just here, Troy Waters. I'm just here kind of for an announcement. Uh, Boy Scout Troop Twenty-two, uh, the troop has done numerous projects and service hours and everything through the city and the county, uh, all the way from the animal shelter to Mansfield Park, each group cemetery. I mean, just so much for the community. And this Sat, this Saturday from eleven to six, they'll be having their annual hog roast. That's the only fundraiser the troop has for the year, and, uh, just kind of will get it out to you guys, the public, everybody's invited. We have tickets for sale. If anybody wants them, they can contact me or get hold of somebody at the troop. You buy them a head or ten dollars a piece at the doors, uh, twelve dollars and get the food and sit down there and eat, get it to go, whatever, but it's, uh, for a great cause and great food.
Fairgrounds? Fairgrounds?
Yes.
Always delicious.
So is, I think this, I don't want to say what year this, I think it's like the twenty-eighth year. I don't know if it's been here enough. Yeah, they definitely loaned the tickets this year, but.
Is it Hartland Hall or the?
Uh, Memorial Building now.
Okay.
It's the one back where they do the four H.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the one that sits back where they do the four H and all that, so this like twenty-eighth year they've done it.
Thank you.
And that's it?
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we see, uh, I, I go to my South Side Walmart, I love it, but if you see the boys or the Girl Scouts outside, buy the popcorn, buy the cookies. It goes to a, uh, even with, you know, if you don't know about the hog roast, buy, buy a box of cookies, buy a bag of popcorn. That goes, uh, your, that ten bucks and that twenty bucks goes a long ways. Uh, I buy those lemon cookies like crazy, and I love the, the sweet kettle popcorn. Just buy it. They're out there. Um, they don't, they set up the table. They're out there on shift, off shift. Um, and if you don't, if you can't buy, give them two bucks, you know, you know, I, I, I walked out, didn't have a twenty on me, gave the kid a five, uh, from the Boy Scouts last weekend. Um, just get, that is a phenomenal, both, both organizations are phenomenal. Um, just give what you can, and if you can, it's not, it's not that big deal either, but if you can give anything, give to them. It goes a long way. Um, those kids are out there and they, they work their, their tails off to get those badges, and, um, they do, there's a lot of work that goes into just one little badge that's, that's on that they have, so just promote them, please.
And I want to add this too. A lot of people, you never was in scouts, you don't know, but having your Eagle Scout, that is like the highest thing you can have on resume for anywhere. Uh, getting in the military, you automatically move up a rank. I mean, so you get done boot camp, you're up, and it's not easy to get. They work hard to get it, and you might see, like you said, the popcorn, you might think, oh, that's thirty dollars, a little can of popcorn, but that thirty dollars is putting them into training and camps and everything, and, uh, there's a lot of, all the troops, I'm going to say is good, but this Troop Twenty-two, they get a lot of good men to come out here. We got three right. Well, two and, and a leader that's all just recently got on the Delaware County Sheriff's Department, and, uh, I mean, they're, they do a lot of good for it, so. If you think about once, like I said, if you can contact me or, you know, hold somebody over the troop, if not, you can get tickets at the door.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Being a former life scout myself, I understand. Yep. Always donate. Jim Lee?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. I'm gonna say the last part of this. I can't read the first part. Billy? Oh. Man.
I signed it rather than, I don't know why I did that. Uh, okay, um, so I noticed in the last couple of weeks that I have talked to a couple of you, and apparently you guys as a council are still having issues with the email. I, I don't understand why that would be. Um, uh, one of two things is happening. You're either not responding to emails or you're not getting emails, and if you're not getting them from me, I'm sure you're not getting them from other people, so you probably should be looking into this. This is something that's happened, um, frequently since you guys have been up here. Uh, it's, it's ridiculous that you guys would continue having these problems. If you can't get IT to fix it, set up your own email, you've got to do something to be able to communicate with the public. I was talking to one of you guys, and the person I was talking to said, well, you know, I answer everybody, and I said, well, you answer everybody that, that you're, that you're getting the email from. The people that you're not receiving the emails from, you're not responding to, so that's an issue. Uh, if you are getting the emails and you're just not responding, that's a bigger problem. So I, I don't know what the problem is. You're either, there's an issue with IT or you're not doing your job. So both of those need to be fixed, either or. So that's, that's number one. Uh, number two, thank you for pulling, uh, or tabling or whatever you did with resolution sixteen twenty-five. I think that was a great, uh, move to see what goes on here, and, uh, I'm very concerned about resolution sixteen twenty-five, but we'll see what goes on with that, so thank you for pulling that, but figure out what's going with your emails. That's a big problem, so thank you.
Lynn Thornburg?
I'm Lynn Thornburg, East Washington Street. First off, I'm going to, um, you can go to the hog roast, but then come over to the Washington Street Festival. This would be, would have been the forty-ninth, but COVID dropped one, so, because next year's would be, would have been, would be the fiftieth, because the twentieth, twenty-fifth was in oh-one, nine eleven, like three days after that. Okay, why I'm really here. I have a property on Tillison. Um, I lived there for three years and became homesick for Washington Street, so I moved back. And, um, right after I decided to do that, AEP tore up the street, and it was supposed to be done last year, but they found a problem, so I had to try to move with big giant holes in the street, you know, and barrels, and I had to, uh, deal with that. So I got moved finally, but now the house is for sale. Nobody can see the sign. Nobody can see the house. It's like, hey, let's just put our porta potties here and our bulldozers there, and, and strategically on the open house day, why don't we put some barrels lined up so nobody can see the house for sale? So I, I'm a widow, elderly. And I really need to sell my house. I feel like AEP is, has been dragging this out. I mean, you know, it's, it's a negative to move that property with, you know, people say, I don't ever want to live on this street because it seems like it's always torn up. So I don't know what you can do. My former, um, councilperson has been assisting, just by listening to me complain, but, um, you know, I mean, if they have money, like if I were a business and they were impacting my business, they would probably pay a compensation. So if there's anything like that, I'll, I'll take a check.
Mrs. Thornburg, um, number one, your house is lovely.
I know.
Number two, your new house is lovely as well.
Yes, it is.
I will, um, all, all kidding aside, I will reach out to Rob Kiesling and just ask them if they could be better neighbors and, and, uh, better community partners by not putting the large machinery in front of your for-sale sign.
Yes.
Um, I, I, it is, it is a problem. I have seen it, uh, and, and they do know that it is a problem, and this, this, you're exactly right. This project was supposed to take six months, and it started in March of twenty twenty-four.
Right.
So, um, uh, we, I will contact Rob Kiesling and, and I will ask him to reach out to you. I, I know that there are issues. Will they, will they? I know that there are issues. Well, they, well, they will help some of the residents, but we haven't come across someone selling their property yet.
I did hear someone in my family, not you, I know, called them and asked about it, and they called the city, I guess. And whoever the city answered, probably the street department. And they told this person that they're going to have to go all the way to Bethel and hard telling how long that is, and it has to be 55 degrees to even pave. So it's probably not going to get done even till next year.
The paving will not be done until 2026, and that is correct. However, the barrels should be moved before then.
Okay.
That is correct. I don't believe they can pave when it gets down too cold. It will just buckle and do that. But the project will be going further north on Tillotson. But hopefully it will move into councilperson Gullian's district and be done with us in District 2. But before then, there is going to be some traffic changes on Tillotson. It's going to go down to one lane. I mean, it's, we're still in the middle of it, but hopefully towards the end of the tunnel. But I will talk to Mr. Keisling and have him reach out to you about the situation in front of your house.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I, Ms. Thornburg?
I'm sorry you've been having a hard time selling your house, but since you're here, do you want to tell us the address of the house that's for sale?
It's a, it's a cute little mid-century modern property that was built by the actual developer of that little neighborhood.
Yes.
And in 1967, it has a lot of the original cool stuff from a mid-century modern. A fairly new heat pump, energy efficient. Newish water heater and a fenced yard with rose bushes.
That's what I wanted.
1304.
Yay.
North Tillotson. If you're driving down and you, and the stuff's in the way, but just look, in the driveway is one of those big old giant mailboxes.
Oh, mailbox.
Yes, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cameron Grubbs.
Evening, Council. I probably should have gotten a closer seat. I was waiting on Lynn to be like, it's got everything you need. And Dana Cortez. But I just kind of wanted to come up, and I had a few things to talk about just as far as Pride. It was really great to see everybody come out to Pride this weekend. Muncie really showed up and regional. It was really awesome to see everybody out there and enjoying Cannon Commons. Lynn already brought up the old Washington Street Festival is this weekend. Definitely it's two days, come out. And then the 18th is the Muncie Bridge Dinner on the, on Washington Street. It's that bridge. It's always a great event. Definitely encourage anybody to come out there and enjoy that. The, I did have one question, and that was, so I'd watched Friday's meeting, and there was a bit of a discussion over department heads making more than what the city had, what the budget had allotted for, like what they were, the line items allowed for. And there was discussion, but was anything ever found about that? Like, did we, were any answers provided?
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms.?
Unfortunately, no. There was, we were left with some discussion. The administration contends that they are able to pay up to the maximum amount that's established in the salary ordinance, even though several councilpersons remember that there was a discussion that said that's just the maximum amount, but we can't pay over what's in the line, what you've appropriated into the line item. So there's going to be some discussion there. However, interestingly, because of that conversation, I went back and looked at 2024 and the salary ordinance that would have covered 2024. And there were at least four, four different department heads who were paid above the salary ordinance. Channel 60, our communications director was paid more than their salary ordinance allowed. Beach Grove, what else? Animal Shelter. So all of those, that's a situation where even if we go by what the controller has offered, the city is paying above and beyond. And so we don't even know if that's going to happen with 2025. And there will come a point in time when those line items are expended, probably end of October, beginning of November. Those line items will run out of funds, and they'll have to come, hopefully they'll come to us for an additional appropriation so we can put some more money into that. So, but yes, it was, it was a tense discussion. And no, it has not been resolved yet. And we still now have questions about 2024 and the fact that they're paying above the ordinance.
I appreciate that. And also, I may just express appreciation for all of you on the council, because I know that dealing with the budget is a pain. And like you're having to, especially with SBE1 going out. And appreciation to even this administration, because they're having to work it out too. But I know that you're trying to find money for, I mean, now we've got to pay for first responders because the money from, we had to cover the payments using the opioid money. And it's not like that's something we're going to be able to use. So I do not envy you all at all. So appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Other concerns from the audience? As being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman McIntosh, second to his right. Everybody.
Everybody.